All right. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday evening, August 25th. It's noon. We're going to go ahead and start our regular city council meeting for the for the evening, and I'll call a meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Okay, Ms. Huffman, roll call.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lower.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Kevin virtually present.
Okay, we're hearing symphonic music going on in the lobby, so it's just kind of throwing us off real quick. But okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. I hope everyone is doing well as we close out August. And I know the kids have been back in school for a couple of days now. It seems like everything's going well as far as just getting everyone in and doing all that. I know my kids have been doing a mixture of both online and in person. So it's been just a little kind of a weird world to get used to, but everyone seems to be doing okay with it. So Paul, go ahead and go through the particulars about accessing the meeting.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the council meeting tonight. If you are logged in using the GoToWebinar client, you'll see a toolbar with four buttons. The button on the top is the button that opens and closes the user interface. If all you see are the four buttons, click the orange arrow, and that will expand it out where you can see the the whole control panel. All attendees' microphones are muted. There are two ways that you can communicate with city council. One would be to raise your hand by clicking the hand button on your vertical menu bar. The other one would be to type a question into the question pane in the attendee interface. If you are not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. To raise your hand, click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red. At that point, a member of staff will call on you by the name you registered and will unmute you. To ask a question in the questions pane, in the attendee pane, type the question to the city council or staff members. The staff will read the question out loud and direct it to the appropriate party. If the question pane is not visible, click on the orange arrow to open the attendee pane. And back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I do want to, if it's okay, we'll do it now since we're at the beginning. So bear with me while the presentation is for a few seconds. I do want to let everybody know that I received word yesterday that former mayor Jerry Howes, her mother had passed away yesterday. And a lot of you knew or know Jerry. She, her mom was always around and was a big part of her life. And lived, I think, past 100 years old as well. So she had a really good long life and with her family by her. But I just wanted to send our condolences along as a city and just have a quick moment of silence. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to our presentations. And tonight, we have a presentation from CDOT, Department of Transportation, on the Build Grant project. And it looks like we have a Mr. Zamora and Mr. Hunt. I'm going to go ahead and let you guys take it away.
I'll be doing the presentation. This is Daniel. I'm a resident engineer in CDOT in Colorado Springs. Do you want to introduce yourself, Richard?
Yeah, my name is Richard Zamora, and I'm the Region Two Transportation Director for CDOT. And I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity and some time on your agenda this evening to go through this, you know, where we're at with this particular project. It's a very important project for the region, not only for CDOT region, but also for the local region in terms of, you know, improving safety and access and mobility for the citizens of the area and also our military bases. But then I'm going to turn it over to Dan. And Dan, I believe Leslie Mace is going to be helping with this as well. Is that correct?
Yes, I think Leslie Mace is on, but I'll be doing the presentation.
Okay.
So I think Leslie Mace is on here also. I'm not absolutely sure, but she's the project manager for this project. Can we go back to the first slide? Great, thank you. So this is what we call our Military Access Mobility and Safety Improvement Project. And this project has been in the works for a while now, and so we're moving forward with several, there's several projects that are tied to this. And there's a couple of them that you're probably really more interested in, it's probably I-25 and maybe Charter Oaks. So if you can use that next slide, please. Thank you. So this is kind of just a brief background. So in 2019, a military land use study identified transportation needs. And then last year, in 2019, CDOT, and with the county as a partner, we submitted for a build grant for four project components. And the project total is around 160 million. Then we got awarded the grants. Out of the 25 million, we got 18.35, which is more than we thought we were getting. So we were really pleased that we got that much. So that will help us a lot. We have selected a CMGC contractor that is seen with construction. They may have been helping us with our design. And then they'll have a chance to do the construction on that, too. And so on the next slide, we're going to show very levels of design. So I know it's kind of hard to see for many of you guys. But we'll kind of start up with, you can see number one, that's I-25, safety improvements that we're doing from South Academy, just a little bit south of the Fountain Bitter Change. And what that don't tell, what it will entail, well, we're going to resurface I-25. We're going to provide 12-foot shoulders inside and out and some median barrier. So those are the major components of that. And we also will be replacing the bridges over Academy. And those will get widened to accommodate any future lanes in the future. So number two, you can see kind of up in the right-hand corner, that's Colorado 94. So we kind of have two different construction projects up there. We have one that's going to have some passing lanes. And we're going to provide some fiber from 24 out to about nine miles, about the end of that yellow line there. Then we'll have another project where we'll kind of redo the intersection at kind of Blaney Road. That's where the trash trucks kind of go north. We've had some pretty severe accidents there, so we're going to do some improvements to take care of that. So then, number three, at the bottom there, that's Charter Oaks. So that'll be some date improvements for 19. And we're working with the county very close on that. We probably have 90 to 95% plans for that. So the only thing we're really waiting for is, once we get to IGA with the county, you know, build grant agreement in place, we can probably start that. And we're hoping to, you know, start that as soon as we can. So that probably will start, you know, more likely after the, in the new year, probably. And it will get finished next year. And then you can see number four, which is South Academy. That's another El Paso County job and project. And so they are widening that all the way from, you know, South Academy all the way up to where the free lanes is at, I believe that's Bradley. So that's, those are our project components. There's a lot of work to do, and we're really progressing well, I think, with a lot of things. So if there's any questions on these components, if not, we can move on to the next slide. So this is, go ahead. Somebody have a question?
There was a question that popped up.
Okay.
I think, let me go ahead and ask it now. It's from Representative Lois Langgraf has actually joined the meeting. And she has a question about Highway 115, and if that's got any kind of plans for the future as well. So if you can address that at some point during the rest of your presentation.
Okay.
This is Richard Zamora. I can address that at the end of this presentation because it's not really connected to this particular project.
Okay.
On this one, you can kind of see the schedule. I won't go over it in detail, but you can see where we're kind of wanting to start I-25 here early next year. And that'll, that is quite a long project. So that's probably the biggest component of this whole project. And C-94 is going to be, is going to, we're going to hopefully start that in September, the passing lanes and IPS. We got everything in place to do that. It's just getting the contract so we get the contractor going. You can see Charter Oaks that we want to start, you know, this year. You know, it'll be close. It could pop into next year, just depending on the grant and the IGA. And, you know, all the holidays in there, too, it's hard to start stuff. And in South Academy, that's a pretty good day. They are progressing well and they're staying on schedule for that. So I think that's the schedule. I'm not sure. I think, I'm not sure if there's another slide or not. If there's any questions, I might be happy to answer any. I'm not sure if anybody's asking questions today. I don't know if I can see that on my screen.
Okay, yeah. Counselperson Thompson.
Thank you for coming tonight and doing this presentation. I know I've kind of been a squeaky wheel on this for a number of years. So now that it's actually happening, what are we going to do to address the traffic issues? Because that's really the main way people, you know, get out of here to work. And then if there's an accident or slowdown, they dump on the Highway 85. So are you coordinating with the state police? Have you contacted our police department? And, you know, are all just kind of working together on that?
Yeah, so that's, you know, once we really get close with I-25, we'll be contacting a lot of stakeholders. And that includes the city of Fountain, their police, the police. And what we'll be doing is a traffic incident management plan. And that will address any emergencies that happen on I-25 and how we handle those and get those off the road really quickly. So we're just starting that traffic incident management plan, actually. But we'll be definitely talking with, you know, the city of Fountain and the city of Fountain Police, for sure.
Will there ever be a time when the freeway is completely shut down on either side? Or is there always going to be one lane open in each direction?
Well, we'll have two lanes in each direction always. We'll never have one lane during construction. And if we do have one lane, it'll be at night. And there'll be, there will be some closures of I-25, maybe northbound or southbound, just depending on the construction, especially around those bridges at South Academy. If we start demoing those, we may require a closure during the night just to keep it safe for everybody.
I'm going to look to see if there's any other questions from council. I do not see any. And if you don't mind, Mr. Zamora commenting on the other, the Highway 115.
Sure. So I think most folks are aware, you know, we worked over the last year pretty tirelessly with a lot of our stakeholders, developed a 10-year transportation plan that was, you know, partially based upon revenues that we were expecting and also anticipated revenues over those 10 years. And so 115 was identified as a top priority for the Central Front Range Transportation Planning Region. So we did identify a project on 115. And it was supposed to be delivered within the first four years of our plan. So unfortunately, you know, with the downturn in the economy with COVID, and there's a lot of uncertainty around funding and when how money is actually going to flow into CDOT, I'm not entirely certain anymore on when that project is going to be delivered. It still remains a priority for us. But again, it's going to be contingent upon how money begins to flow into the department and, you know, possibly some actions, whether or not the state legislature continues Senate Bill 267 funding for the department and/or we possibly get a federal stimulus bill to address infrastructure needs. Hopefully, that addresses your question.
Okay, the only thing she has right now, unless she wants to speak, and you can, Ms. Langgraf, is you can also address, she said you can talk with her offline as well to address any other further issues. So unless she puts her hand up or anything, we'll just go ahead and go forward with that part. I think we're good. I'm going to check to make sure. So thank you for all the information on this project. And we've been looking forward to it, as you know, and like Ms. Thompson said, it's been just something that's been on the minds down here because that's going to be kind of a major area for a lot of reasons with a person opening up a gate and just some other things going on, that it'll be nice to get that area fixed up. And glad we could help support anyone who can.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. And, you know, we'll be happy to give, you know, once we get closer to construction, you know, kind of any updates if you, or if council maybe wants to.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, bye.
Okay, and then we are going to continue moving forward. No commission committee appointments tonight. I'm going to go to, in the city council agenda requests and announcements. I'm going to go ahead and start with Ms. Duncan. Anything tonight?
Mayor, this is Kristi. We actually did have an appointment on the agenda for a regular planning commission member.
Oh, it's. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and do that then. Sorry.
That's okay. This is for an appointment of a regular member to planning commission. Last Monday on August 17th, member Melissa Smith had submitted her resignation, which was right after the previous council meeting where we had appointed a vacancy at that time. At the August 11th council meeting, there were, there was one vacancy and two applicants for planning commission. We did reach out to that second applicant who was not appointed to see if they were still interested, which was Ms. Angela Hacket Larson. She did still express interest in serving on planning commission. Therefore, we would request tonight that Ms. Hacket Larson would be appointed as a regular planning commission member to serve the remaining vacated term until March of 2023.
Okay, awesome. That'll count great then. I do see that she is on. If there's anything that she would like to, if you'd like to add.
Hi, nothing additional to add from the last conversation. I just appreciate Kristi reaching out. And I'm very interested, and the timing just worked out well. So thank you.
Yeah, usually that's what happens. And so like I said last week, or last time, we go in these ebbs and flows with appointments. And so it just, I'm glad it did work out for you as well. So unless there's any questions from council, we did talk to her last meeting. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on this one.
Moved approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Thompson. Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lower, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kevin, yes. Motion carried.
Unmute again. I keep forgetting. So Ms. Thompson and Ms. Duncan joined me tonight. So I'm trying to do the muting so we're not echoing in here, and I keep forgetting it's on. So if you see my mouth going and someone just yelled at me to unmute, but we'll go ahead. And sorry about missing that, Kristi. I don't know what I was thinking there. And so, okay, now we will move on to council agenda requests and announcements. And I will start again with Ms. Duncan.
Okay, good evening to everyone. I want to say that the Fountain Youth Council, we're shooting for September the 23rd, 2020 at 6:00 PM to have our first meeting, applications. The deadline, I'll extend those until September the 1st. You know, we're having a lot of back and forth due to school, and everybody's trying to get acclimated. So if you're still considering, please submit your application. This week also commemorates the 57th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King's famous speech, "I Have a Dream." There will be a rally at Acacia Park on Saturday, August the 28th, started at 10:00 AM. And social distancing will be enforced, as well as requiring everyone to wear a mask. So this event is hosted by the Diversity Council, and I will be one of the speakers at this event. So if you don't have anything to do, put that on your calendar that this Saturday, August the 28th at 10:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. Actually, when I get to visit Washington, DC every once in a while, one of my favorite places to go is to stand on the steps where he stood and just, just kind of relive the experience. That was one of my favorite days of the year to teach the kids is about just all the things that he did. And then actually to go there and then show them pictures of all that. It's just a really neat experience. So exciting for that. Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Geek. Anything tonight?
Yes, I just want to make sure Mrs. Duncan's got that correct. I believe the 28th is Friday. August 29th is Saturday. Is it 10:00 AM on Saturday? The reason I am asking because my 49th anniversary with my wife is the 28th, and that is Friday.
I'm sure it's the day because the next day is the.
Flyer to our media so they say that I think it is the 28th. But I need to make sure, and right now I can't get it on my fingers right now. But I'll give the media so they can post it on our website if anybody is interested.
That's all I have. I just want to make sure that that was squared away. Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot, and congratulations. You don't look that old, so you're doing pretty good. She's treating you good. So congratulations to both you and Ms. Marcia. Okay, Mr. Applegate?
I got nothing tonight.
All right, Ms. Estes?
I just have a quick reminder that tomorrow evening, that the city hall will be lit up with the purple and gold lights in commemoration of Women's Equality Day and celebrating the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. So tomorrow night, if you come on down at dusk, you can see the city hall lit up. And that's in for the Forward Into Light campaign. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thanks for keeping us on our toes with that and making sure we, we're going to be a part of that. So I'm looking forward to it. Mayor Pro Tem?
Unbelievably, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
I am really excited to talk about trunk or treat. We will be having it this year. We're going to have it really different. We're going to have it at Metcalf Park, and it will be a drive-through trunk or treat. The people with the booths will be scattered around the park in a ring. We're going to have them drive-through. And then the kids will get candy, handed to them to eat in the car as they drive through the different spooky and fun Halloween displays that are out there. So we need the businesses to step forward that have been involved with this before, or even some new ones if they'd like to participate. It's open to businesses and nonprofits in the city of Fountain. And we're just really excited to have the event, and we'll start it at dusk, and it'll go for a couple of hours. And I think it'll be fun for the kids. It'll help keep that tradition alive. We're trying to, it was always trunk or treat on Main Street, so we're trying to rack our brains and come up with another cute little scenario for it. We haven't come up with one yet that I've heard of. But I think it's going to be, be really fun, and we'll kind of maybe combine that with our community day at the park and have them bring out some of the big pieces of equipment and stuff. We'll see. It's in the planning stages. But I want everybody to know, mark your calendars for October 30th for the drive-through trunk or treat event and to keep some of that tradition going. And I think it'll be really exciting. Also, today is the 104th anniversary of the founding of the national parks. So that is really exciting, and we are all benefiting from that wonderful thing that they did a few years ago and the ones in our own backyard. And I have come across several people lately that think it's too late to register to vote. So I just want to make sure we keep getting the word out there to go to Go Vote Colorado and register to vote. And of course, in Colorado, we have same-day voter registration, so you can even walk in and vote. But, but really, the easiest thing to do it, so you don't have to worry about the weather that day or anything going on with COVID or the flu or anything, is to register early so you can get your ballot and then just drop it in one of the couple of ballot boxes we got down here in Fountain Valley. One at the police station and one at the Fountain Regional Park. Vote early, but vote once.
Yeah, right. Vote once. Okay, the only thing I have for tonight, okay, we are going to go ahead and pull the trigger and have kind of a combination of virtual and in-person council meetings, starting our next meeting, which I forget the date. I think it's September 8th. Yeah, September 8th, so two weeks from tonight, we are going to do in-person if you want to come in. I don't know how, if we're going to do registrations or not, but just realize if you do come in and we're going to have to social distance everybody within the room. So there's a capacity, and we'll get that information onto the website so everyone knows if you want to come in. If you wanted to continue to do virtual, we'll still offer this as a part of that as well. I, my suspicion is this may be just something we do from here on out, regardless of COVID. It seems to allow for people to be a part of this, whether you're at home or not, or you're just too busy, you can't come in. But you still want to be able to pay attention and listen what's going on. So there will be some protocols that we have to follow as far as tracking and those types of things. So just be prepared. If you come in, we will ask you for your, your contact information, just in case. And we are going to be wearing masks and the whole bit. So we're going to go by the books on this one and allow the opportunity to try to do some virtual and in-person meeting at the same time. So I was, Carr Municipal League is doing their annual conference, which is usually held in June, and it's normally in a mountain resort like Breckenridge. I think this year, I can't remember where it's supposed to be. Actually, it's supposed to be in Westminster this year, so we kind of got lucky on that one. But next year, they're going to be doing it in Snowmass. And but because And but because of COVID this year, they had to cancel, and so this year they're doing it all virtual. And so there was a question that came up, or just a topic of conversation that came up that, to see what communities, what they were doing. And it sounded like a lot of communities are still doing virtually. Some of the bigger cities sounded like they are doing, are both virtual and in-person. So we're going to go ahead and try it, and I think I've been putting it off enough that I think we're just going to do it, see what happens. So if you want to come in, you're more than welcome, just realize there are going to be some protocols. And if there's too many people, for whatever reason, we will have to figure that out, and you may have to come back another time. So with that, did you need something? No, okay, I think that's it on my end. And so we will go ahead and move on to our public-to-be-heard agenda item. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you sign up with the clerk. Prior to the meeting, council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. I'm going to start with Ms. Huffman. Did we get any emails or anything we need to share tonight?
No, sir, we did not receive any emails this evening.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm looking at the public that are in tonight. If you would like to speak, just raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any. As I stated earlier, I want to give her an opportunity. State Representative Alois Landgraf has joined us in the meeting tonight, and I just wanted to, if there's anything you'd like to address with us tonight, you're more than welcome. If not, I'll just, we'll keep moving forward. I'm going to kind of wait to see if you unmute. All right, she didn't unmute, and I'm not hearing anything other than that. So just glad you could join us tonight and hope you're doing well. We will go ahead and keep moving forward. We are on item number seven, our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine. It will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member or citizens or requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of the council. We have items. What would council like to do? Ms. Duncan.
Mayor, motion to approve shall be included under the consent agenda.
Okay, so that's your motion to approve. I just need a second. Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Awesome, all right, we're going to move on to item number eight. Old business, we have no old business tonight, we're going to move on to item number nine, new business. No items were removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go right into 9B. I'm opening a public hearing and resolution 20-066, a resolution adopting the City of Fountain Three Mile Plan for 2020. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is the Three Mile Plan that must be adopted annually. The city's Three Mile Plan is included within the Fountain Comprehensive Development Plan and our annexation plan. Next slide. The state statutes do mandate that all municipalities have this plan in place and it's updated annually. The Three Mile Plan outlines that no municipal boundaries can be extended more than three miles in any direction in any given year. The previous Three Mile Plan was adopted in November of 2018, and there have been no changes to that plan since then. As this is a public hearing, this was notified or noticed in the El Paso County Advertiser and News. And then staff received no comments or feedback on the plan. This first figure is Figure 1 of the Comprehensive Development Plan, where the Three Mile Plan is outlined in blue. It does not extend on to the West boundaries, as that is Fort Carson, and it's federal lands. And municipal boundaries cannot annex into federally owned lands. The next figure is the figure that's within the annexation plan. Again, the blue line does outline the Three Mile Boundary from our existing city limits. Staff finds that the previously adopted comprehensive plan is compliant with state statutes. That the Three Mile Plan depicted in both the Comprehensive Development Plan for the city and the Fountain Annexation Plan do comply with the required state statutes. And there have been no changes to the plan since 2018. This item was presented to Planning Commission at August 19th, a meeting where they did recommend approval. And staff would also recommend approval of Resolution 20-066, adopting the 2023 Mile Plan. Are there any questions?
Okay, I will go to council first to see if there's any questions. All right, and it is a public hearing, so I will look to public to see if they have any questions. Okay, it looks like we are good to go on that, so I will close the public hearing and see what council would like to do. Mr. Geek.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 20-066.
And Mayor Pro Tem.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Martinez, for the information on that. Item 9C, Resolution, I need to put my glasses on. Resolution 20-072, a resolution establishing a groundwater treatment standard for the removal of perfluorinated compounds in drinking. Mr. Blankenship.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here this evening to present to you a recommendation to adopt a, or formally establish a quantifiable standard for groundwater treatment. This evening, I have with me former Utilities Director Curtis Mitchell, and I'm going to turn it over to Curtis to provide you with the background information. And then when he's finished with that, I will make the recommendation, and then either Curtis and I will be happy to answer your questions. So Curtis, if you're there, the stage is now yours.
All right, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to see you all again and connect with all of you again.
You too.
I was very pleased when I heard from Dan that Dan and staff wanted to move ahead with really formalizing what has been the commitment of Fountain Utilities to the community from the beginning, which was that we'll take care, you will all take care of public health and safety. And fortunately, with Southern Delivery System, as we've discussed in the past, and with the assistance of the community for the first couple of years with reducing water consumption, you all were able to make it until June 18th of 2018, when the first groundwater treatment went in place using granular activated carbon. And at that point in time, you all have been able to achieve a non-detectable level of removal of the perfluorinated compounds. So from the beginning, it was communicated to the community that that was the intent, and that's what Fountain was doing, which was removing the six perfluorinated compounds that are tested to non-detectable levels of two parts per trillion or less. So really, really admire Dan's leadership in recommending to you, City Council, that this be formalized, formalized by you and formalized by the city to really make a strong statement to the community with regard to public health and safety and the intent of Fountain Utilities to achieve this level of treatment. Also, it's very important that what's been included is really looking at all waters because of the interconnection with other systems to make sure that, not just with Fountain's groundwater treatment, but with what's coming from the Fountain Valley Authority in interconnections with Whitefield and Security, that that is the treatment goal with all the water that's delivered to customers. So that is kind of the background and the rationale around what's being brought to you for consideration this evening.
Curtis, thank you for providing that background, and thank you for all of the groundwork that you laid to get us to this, to this, or this position. Essentially, what we're doing is we're formalizing the commitment that the staff and the city made under Curtis' direction in the past. This is specifically the standard that we're recommending to be established is specifically for the groundwater that we treat. As Curtis mentioned, we do get water from the Fountain Valley Authority, and occasionally, we also do water exchanges with Whitefield. The good news is, is with Whitefield, they are bringing groundwater, but they're also using the same treatment technology that we are having, that we have now, and are also having built as part of our water treatment plant at Aga Park. We will, you know, monitor as we get that water. We will monitor the water that comes into our system to ensure that it meets all of the state and federal requirements. But as far as this level of treatment, this will apply to the water that we actually treat ourselves. So it's with pleasure that I'm able to make this recommendation that the City Council approve Resolution 20072, formalizing and establishing a groundwater treatment standard for the removal of perfluorinated compounds to less than two parts per trillion in drinking water.
All right, thank you for that. That's a, it seems like it's been going on for ever, it hasn't been that long. Thanks, Curtis, you know, as you know, and just all the work that you guys have done with this in ensuring that the water we're providing is good, the water is. So this is just.
I don't have any questions, I wanted to make a motion.
Okay, hold on, let me see if there's anybody else. I'm just going to check to see if there's other questions.
Mayor, if I could speak again for just a second, Mr. Curtis.
Sure, go ahead.
I did want to point out to City Council that it's also my pleasure to be representing all of you at the CML Virtual Conference with regard to this matter, and sit on a panel with a member from Caro Department of Health and Environment and a member from EPA. It's a great chance for us to share with other communities Fountain's story and how Fountain has moved ahead with addressing the water contamination. And it's just interesting doing it virtually. It was pre-recorded three weeks ago, and I was alone in a room with a couple of cameras and not even other panelists. So just an interesting way to do things. So tomorrow, I'll be logged in so that I can answer questions that come up just through chat. But again, it's a pleasure to represent all of you, and I would say that I've always appreciated the political support at all levels. It's the level of City Council with Representative Landgraf at a state level, with Congressman Lamborn and our two senators at a federal level. Just have appreciated support from all of you from the beginning, and that's gone a long ways.
I appreciate that, Curtis, and I think you, myself, Ms. Thompson, were sitting in that meeting at the Plaza when they first kind of was bringing this all to us in a in a session, and I remember everyone in that room wanted blood and wanted to go after the Air Force, and we took a different route, and I think it really worked to our benefit. And again, it is a tribute to all those people that you mentioned, especially at the federal level, at the state level, with Alois and of course, everybody else. It's, I think we've gone further than I think any other community would have probably been able to going at it the way we did. And so that was, you know, just, it was a tough thing, but I think that's really what got us to where we are. And it's kind of, you fight your battles with, how that saying goes, with honey rather than vinegar. So I think that's what we did, and it worked out to our benefit. So I may join that session tomorrow, see how you do, and just to hear that story, I don't know what the other sessions are that, but what I remember today, when I looked at them, they weren't that interesting. So this will be the standing-room-only event, so we'll see how it goes. Thanks, Curtis. Okay, I have Mayor Pro Tem, did you have any questions?
Yeah, just one, and forgive me if you already explained this and I somehow missed it. It would not be the first time that that's happened to me, but I'm trying to understand how it was settled on the level of less than two parts per trillion. Is that sort of the threshold for when something becomes detectable versus undetectable? Or how did that number become the number?
Mayor Pro Tem, this is Dan Blankenship, and yes, you're exactly right. That is the lowest detectable level at this time.
Excellent, thanks, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Applegate, did you have any questions?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, hold on. Ms. Thompson.
I think this is kind of a historic moment for our city to pass this resolution, so I would request that it be read out loud into the record. I think this is kind of a historic occasion for our city to pass this resolution. I would like, I was wondering if you could read it into the record before we pass it.
Okay.
Mayor, would you like me to read it, or is that something that you would do?
I'm on mute again. I'll go ahead and read it. I was just checking. No, I have it right here. Just checking to make sure I have no other questions. Okay, so bear with me as I get through it. I got to put my glasses back on so I can see. A Resolution 20-072, a resolution establishing a groundwater treatment standard for the removal of perfluorinated compounds in drinking water. Whereas in 2016, perfluorinated compounds, PFCs, were discovered in the city's groundwater through EPA-required testing. And whereas on May 25th, 2016, the EPA established health advisory levels, HALs, of 70 parts per trillion for two PFCs, PFOs and PFOA. And whereas the city's groundwater exceeds the established HALs or health advisory levels, and whereas the primary source of the PFCs is from Peterson Air Force Base. And whereas, as a short-term solution, the Air Force provided and installed two sets of granular activated carbon or GAC filters as well as two, at Wells 2 and 3. Whereas the GAC filters have been in service since June 18th, 2018. And whereas the Air Force, in partnership with the City of Fountain, is currently in the process of constructing an ion exchange water treatment plant at Aga Park to remove PFCs from the groundwater. And whereas the city continues to sample the treated drinking water for six PFCs, PFAS, PFOA, PFNA, PFHXS. PFHPA and PFBS. And the sample results have continued to show non-detectable levels, less than two parts per trillion of PFCs. And whereas the granular activated carbon in the ion exchange currently used by Whitefield Water, treatment processes have proven the ability to achieve non-detectable levels for removal of PFCs. And whereas the city and its water customers are concerned about the public health effects of PFCs in drinking water. And whereas the city is verbally committed to removing PFCs in groundwater that is treated and distributed to the community for drinking water, now desires to formalize a commitment through establishment of an ongoing treatment standard. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado as follows. One, the City of Fountain hereby establishes a groundwater treatment standard of less than two parts per trillion current non-detectable level for the following six PFCs, PFAS, PFOA, PFNA, PFHXS, PFHPA and PFBS. This groundwater treatment standard shall remain in effect until amended or repealed by action of the City Council done this 25th day of August 2020. I will make that my motion. Mr. Applegate?
Okay.
Hey, we have a motion in session. For approval of the Resolution 20-72. Ms. Hudson.
Apologize, Mayor Ottega. How do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Protem Lowers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay, here we go. We're on to item 9D. Resolution dash or Resolution 20-068, a resolution approving the infill infrastructure tax sharing agreement. We have Ms. Bailey with us tonight. Go ahead.
Evening, Mayor, Council and Public. It's my pleasure to be with you tonight to propose this tax sharing agreement on behalf of addressing infrastructure of utilities, water and electric within the infill area. Kimberly Bailey, Economic Development, Urban Renewal for the City of Fountain. I am here on behalf of multiple departments within the city as well as external utility divisions to address the matter that we are proposing under this tax sharing agreement. The infill area is an area we drive by every single day. Next slide, please. It is comprised of 367 acres. It has long legacy ownership between three large landowners. They've owned it for multiple decades. The problem with the landmass is that it's not moving into business fulfillment development. It lacks the master planning vision by each of these landowners. We also have a severe infrastructure hurdles within water and electric utilities. We have a fragmented URA, which is usually the tool to solve infrastructure cruxes, but we are unable to enforce that tool because of the fragmentation of that designation area. We are also looking to optimize staff resources and time. We will tell you that the infill area is a highly desired area for development from a tenant and a one-off development interest. And we are burning multiple time and resources under this initiative. Because of that, the city has created the idea to establish a fund, whereas one-fourth of the revenues generated per master plan development in this vicinity would be put into an escrow or a savings type of an account to build up over time and adequately feed and support the long-term water and electric infrastructure runs to necessitate development. Next slide. So the infill map is in the packet. It is defined by three large landowners, and that is what your hatch color coding represents. Your red is owned by Lassardi out of California. Your orange or yellow in the southern basin is owned by Pike's Peak Community Foundation. And the west side, which is identified in the green, blanking the Fountain Regional Park, is actually owned by two partners, Murphy and Anderson. The infill starts south of the Mesa Ridge Parkway. Please click. The areas above in the red are not included in the infill TSA, and that is because their services are derived from a different source. Click, please. So to the west side, the area in the green, we have a water and electric infrastructure lax of service of about $1.2 million. Click, please. The east side, which is the mass land area and the most virgin land area and void of infrastructure, is dialing in at 1.27 million of a lack of infrastructure from water and utilities. Please click. Click. There we go. Hold it. So let's talk about what we're addressing. We're talking about Band-Aid solutions today to serve Kickstarter development, which can happen on the peripheral edge of the infill area. But what we need to get to is a solution to identify long-term sustainability and infrastructure runs in this area. So on the left side of your screen, you see the water map that identifies the water service lines today, which are identified in blue. And you have Xs that identify points of connection that are feasible for Band-Aid solutions today, but will need to transition to a full water loop infrastructure design fulfillment for long-term sustainability. On the right side, you see a map of the electrics of service capacities. This is an area that is even more constrained right now. And our Band-Aid solutions are identified in the areas marked by Xs. And you will notice that is there is zero service available to the far right in this vicinity corridor, hence the lack of development that can fulfill within this corridor. Next slide. So today we heard to talk to you about a Kickstarter project. Please click. The X marks the first Kickstarter, which is 24 acres. It is identified as the pork chop site because it does simulate a pork chop. Please click. This project is proposing full buildout of 11 lots. Lots 1 through 4 are ready to go for vertical development today. They have completed their city planning process. They are completing their land acquisition in September, and they are very hopeful to start their vertical construction December or Q1 of 2021. However, without the addressing of the lack of infrastructure, we have tenants that are looking to come in and serve our community that have hesitation on knowing the sustainability in this marketplace. Next slide, please. So what does this infill TSA represent? It represents the solutions for long-term sustainability. It also identifies some benefits under the city's operation. So in regards to Tabor, any revenues born under the economic development TSA being recommended for adoption is excluded and exempt from Tabor, which means we can hold on to those revenues that are generated from inside the site development and use them as a new source of general revenues for long-term needs in our budget cycles as well as build up our escrow or our fund that needs to support the water and electric utilities extensions long-term planning. The capital investment for this Kickstarter is dialed in at 5.5 million. That replicates in property tags value an increase of about 112% as well as it is projecting about 7.2 million in revenues. And these numbers that are you're quoting are only applicable to sites 1 through 4. Remember, we have a full buildout in this master plan Kickstarter up to 12 up to 11 site pads for development. Utility Enterprises is already addressing constraints and needs of our community today. So what this does is build up a fund and escrow over a period of time instead of putting constraints on current budget operating needs and expenditures. And it procures a fund to ensure long-term sustainability at the tipping point necessitated as development starts to fill in within the infill area identified. The 1.75 transportation tax has been excluded from the TSA. It's been preserved to make sure that those monies that are generated are going towards the needs of transportation. In addition, by supporting this Kickstarter project, it's actually drawing new revenues of sales of transportation tax generations for those needs to be addressed. As far as Old Town goes, the reason for Old Town, one of the reasons for Old Town's lack of fulfillment is because it's so disconnected from the commerce corridors of our valley. Development as well as consumers like to go to energy areas that are fall falling within the regimen of development. By supporting the infill structure, infrastructure TSA, we are actually bringing more connectivity to Old Town, which will blossom and nurture that core as well. In addition, the TSA does provide heightened guardrails of compliance and benefits to the city as well. So the city and the utility enterprise 100% control the fund that our proportional revenues would be put it towards. In addition, there are caps on the fund per the proposed master plan development. In this case, we are saying that the 24 acres will spur 7.2 million only for lots 1 through 4 right now towards sales that are generated. Our city revenue off of that office sales tax equates to 130,000. Out of that 130,000, under this TSA model, we are putting one-fourth aside into the savings account, and the remaining portion goes into our general revenue funds. Lastly, this ensures sustainability for the infill long term. We have some additional interests of medical and service providers looking to come into their our market. This is the pivotal area for servitude and connectivity of transit access. However, they are highly concerned for the our inadequacy to serve the demand of capacities they would bring into this corridor. Next slide, please. So as we have benefits, as we have guardrails as a city under this model, we've done the same for the developer side of the house. We would like to make sure that everyone understands that in this approach, the developer is paying 100% of its 2020 connectivity utility costs today as well as ensuring the future of the utility primary infrastructure runs of the future. The developer is also paying 100% of its internal site plan development and roadway improvements under the city zoning and public works compliance. The infrastructure TSA is actually deemed a visionary solution and valley added measure by the landowners we've identified. The developer of this Kickstarter project being represented as well as the tenants looking to come in and service our populace. So this is nothing that we've sheltered in-house. We've actually shopped this concept, molded this concept with the collective bodies at the table. Lastly, there are guardrails in this for this developer to perform, and any developer that comes in with large master planning development of the remaining 300 and some odd acres still available to build. These guardrails include they must begin vertical construction within 18 months as well as they must begin to spur revenues for those escrows and those savings to build within the initial five-year window. Next slide, please. So with that, I'd like to pause and address any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, I'm looking to see if anybody has any questions from Council. You guys good? You do have a question?
I don't have a question. I just would like to have those two with the water and electric. The two slides that you had in addition to the one we have developmental sites.
Okay, so you like just go back to those. Paul, can you bring back to those slides on the deck?
Yeah, I'm wondering, can you get us a copy of those?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which which slide did you need, Kimberly?
We don't need the slides up?
You don't need the slides up? No, we just want a copy of them. Okay.
No problem.
And I don't see any other hands up or anything for questions on this. You know, and just for everybody's sake, and I'm gonna go on record again tonight, this came up with the the Maverick conversation a few months ago that this area has been in the works for development for years. I think even even pre me being on planning, which is pre 15 years ago. And so I just want the public to understand that that development is coming to this area. And you know, there was a lot of consternation around the little plot of land across from this that Maverick was going to go into back then. And and just the thought that this was going to be open space forever, and we're going to have all this wildlife and eagles landing there and and watch the elk and everything graze upon the 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 areas. And and that's just not a that's not the reality. And I just want people to understand that that people own these plots of property, and they do plan on doing something with them. A lot of it, again, has been as what Ms. Bailey mentioned tonight, is just the infrastructure needed for one entity to put all that money into it for the benefit of a lot of others without everybody sharing that the load there. So it's been kind of the reason why it's been sitting in the state it has been. And so this is an opportunity to share the love with everybody who wants to come in. And again, they are all paying that way. It's nothing that the the taxpayers are having to pay or or refunding on on that. So it is growth paying their way on this one. So but again, I just I can't stress enough that that this area is has been slaughtered for quite some time as for some development, both on the commercial and residential side. So zoning's done. All that stuff is taken care of. And so it's just, again, a matter of these these bits and pieces that they need to to finish up in order for the development to finally go. And so this is a one way or a means to an end. And again, it's I think it's a great idea on the part of staff to really figure out how are we going to make that development pay its way. And so that's what's happening here. And in the in the in those services and and or things that are going to be coming in. So just looking forward to this. And and thanks to all the hard work that, as you said in the beginning, all of the departments that really came in to figure this one out. And and I think it's a it's going to be a win-win for everybody on this on the in the end, when it all is built out. It could be years down the road. I want to be clear about that as well. Just because this is happening doesn't mean, you know, in a year, the whole area is going to be built out. It's not. It's 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 going to take time, and and there's a lot that goes into it. But again, I want to be on record that this is is going to be a busy, busy point in in the city. Somewhere in the future, we don't know when that's going to be, but it is. Mr. Applegate, did you have a question?
No, I didn't. I didn't make a motion. I think everybody's well-versed on this.
Yeah, I think so. And I think you're right on the check with public. I see none there. So Mr. Applegate, go ahead.
I recommend we approve Resolution 20-068, Infill Infrastructure Tax Sharing Agreement.
Okay, let me. I should have checked that for Ms. Bailey. Were you were you complete on all of your
So I just wanted to address the closing comments on that the four maps that make up the infill area of utilities, landmass definition. This TSA model would be a supplement to that packet that we hand out to the landowners, any interested master developers, to know that the city is a partner under the long-term sustainability of this area. Secondarily, by the adoption of the resolution, we are also looking for the Kickstarter project to be the first implementation of the use of the TSA.
Okay, great. All right. So with those extra added comments, Mr. Applegate, did you need to change your motion or anything? Are you good?
No, I think it's the same.
Okay.
I don't see any difference.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I got that on there. And then Mayor Protem?
I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lowers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. Again, thanks to everybody for working hard on this. Okay, we are going to move on. That is our last item tonight for discussion. Item number 10 is correspondence, comments, and executive official reports. I will start with City Manager Scott Trainor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing for me at this time.
All right. Todd Evans, Deputy City Manager.
Mayor, one update, I think Scott and I are both excited that we believe all the pieces are in place for the Zimmerman Properties Senior Living Project up off of Cross Creek and Mesa Ridge. So as of today, that's scheduled to close on September 1st, and then they can get going on construction. So we think we've got that in place, and that will be a, a great senior living facility for the whole Fountain Valley. So we're pretty excited about that one. And that's all I've got there.
Okay, sounds good. That's great work on that one as well. Troy, anything tonight?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blankenship, anything further from utilities? Is he still on?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Nothing, nothing further from utilities. Just took me a second to find the microphone button. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Okay. Mr. Trilch?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For this evening, I just wanted to take a moment to go over some of the changes that are occurring up at Peterson Air Force Base and Shreve Air Force Base with the emergence of the United States Space Force. So, you know, the talk tonight with the new resolution on our PFAS standard and that partnership we have with Peterson Air Force Base was with the, the 21st Space Wing in particular. The 21st Space Wing was their, their support wing that ran that base, and we developed a great partnership with them. Well, the 21st Space Wing is actually no longer. So it has now become the Peterson-Shreve Garrison as part of the new US Space Force. So it has new commander, so all of the leadership that we did know have changed out command. So Colonel James Smith, who was at Shreve's, Shreve Air Force Base with the 50th, 50th Space Wing, is now the commander of the Peterson-Shreve Garrison. So I'll be working to organize a, a meeting to meet with Colonel Smith and learn more about that garrison and just ensure our relationship as it relates to PFAS. Just interestingly, you know, with the, the Space Force, they have created their operational structure. They've got a field command. Instead of wings, like in the Air Force, they have what's called deltas and, and then squadrons. And they've also created their first, what they're called a Star Delta, which will become the Space Training and Readiness Command. Wait for it, Starcom. So if you are like me and grew up on Buck Rogers, Battlestar Galactica, and Star Trek, you find this all very amusing and, and pretty exciting. But just wanted to share some of the things that are going on, pretty exciting stuff up there with our friends up at Peterson and Shreve. So pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
No, thank you for the little bit of comedy there, but you're right. It, you know, everyone's kind of making fun of all the stuff, the logo and all those things. But the fact that we're the, the community that looks like we're going to land that, you know, in this region, I think is a, is a good, is a testament to what we are to the military and, and, you know, to the United States. So, you know, thanks for keeping that contact with everybody. Thank you.
John?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that as frustrating as this has been with us not being able to reach out and meet the new commanders that come in, that, that I talked with you and Scott and, and the mayor, I believe. And we're sending letters from the council and from the city to welcome all the new staff members since we can't come to their welcoming ceremonies anymore because we really want to work hard to keep that, those relationships alive as, as different changes occur in different places. So thank you very much for the, you mentioned those letters went out this week to the incoming officers. So thank you very much.
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember Thompson. We sent congratulatory and welcome letters to all of the new senior leadership of the 4th Infantry Division and the new garrison commander, Fort Carson.
Thank you.
Okay, John, is that good for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Paul, anything from IT?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Huffman?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just a quick update. We're really excited to be moving forward on Fountain Mesa Park rehaul of the entire playground area. It will be age-appropriate for each section. It will be ADA compliant and all-inclusive. And we are offering a ADA swing, not a wheelchair swing, but an ADA accessible swing. So that project has begun, and we're hoping to have all of the play implements put in by the end of October.
Great. All right, thank you for that. And then I don't know if I missed anybody, but I'll let, if there's any other staff that would like to speak. Did I miss? Yeah, I'm not seeing anyone rush to turn their mics on. So we're going to go ahead and go through council. Ms. Duncan, anything further tonight?
I do want to say that I was correct on the dates for Acacia Park. On the 28th, there will also be a youth channel, a youth panel, a youth chat, and it will be live streamed. We have Isaac Newton Ferris Jr., and he's a senior fellow of the King Center, Martin Luther King Jr. He will be there. He's Martin Luther King's nephew. So he will be also in attendance on the 28th. And on the 29th, at the Gold Room, there'll be community leaders, panelists, and also will be in attendance and as a guest for that panel on that day. I also would like to say that Cross Creek BMX, I don't know if anyone is familiar with that, but that's a hidden treasure that we have. And they have Friday night flights. On Friday evenings, they race from 5:45 to 6:45 PM. So if you're looking for something for your kiddos to do who like to ride their bikes, you take out the Cross Creek BMX. Again, I'd like to say congratulations to Lieutenant Veronica Garrett, who is not only the first female lieutenant, but also the first African-American promoted to an officer leadership position in 107 years' history of Fountain Tower Department. Kudos to you on that. The Pike's Peak United Way is looking for volunteers. They feed about 40, 50, 350 families every other week, and they're looking for about 40 to 50 volunteers. So if you are able to volunteer with the Pike's Peak United Way, they are looking for volunteers, and the next distribution will be this Thursday, August the 27th, 2020. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Geek?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Oh, I can't hear anything. Okay, Mr. Applegate?
Nothing more tonight.
All right. Ms. Estes?
Just a quick, I was attending the CML conference today, and I attended, one of the sessions was on the census. So just a reminder to everyone to please fill out your census. If you haven't filled out the one they mailed to you, they will be coming around, and it is very critical for us to get everybody counted. So please follow up on that. Right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Nothing here, sir.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention trunk-or-treat again in case people tuned in a little late, August, August, sorry. October 30th, drive-through at Metcalf Park with a lot more details coming. If you're a business member, it's, we're not going to ask you to buy a ton of candy like we have in the past because we know how expensive that is. It's $50 when you register. And then the city will use their buying power to purchase the candy in bulk and take care of getting that all bagged to pass out. So they won't be that huge expense for you as a business owner. And we're hoping that will make it more affordable for businesses to continue or maybe join us this year for the first time. And we're really excited about that. And then thank you, everybody, for voting yes on the changes to the Military Appreciation Banner Program. We kicked it off two years ago using just active-duty military. And I'm excited about the changes that were voted in tonight to include all active-duty reserves and National Guard service member as well as honorably discharged veterans. So those changes will be on our website to the form. And we're hoping to get, now that we've done it a couple of years, and get that, people to sign up for that and get some more banners lining the streets honoring our military in this town.
Okay, and I don't have anything further tonight on my end that I can think of. We do have executive session tonight, so Ms. Huffman, if you want to announce that.
Thank you. I'd like to request an executive session pursuant to CR Section 24-6-424E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and or instructing negotiators.
Okay, so we have that announcement. What would council, I need a motion for that. Ms. Duncan?
I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Okay, and Mr. Geek?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for executive session. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried. And I have emailed the instructions on the executive session to each of you.
Okay, so for those of you who need to call in, you should have gotten those, that email earlier this evening before our meeting. So give yourself about five or a little over five minutes to call in. And as Ms. Huffman's got to transition up to council chambers and, and get everything set up here for the recording. So with that, I hope you all have a good Labor Day weekend. We will see you on September 8th. We are adjourned.